So is there anyone here that would like to speak to this issue tonight? If you're here, if you could give us your name and address and then speak to the issue. You're up.
My name is Linda Berdusco and my property is right on the golf course. And I would just like to say, the Hanson Brothers promised they would keep their property as a golf course, yet here we are, five years into the covenant, talking about changing zoning. I do not believe the Hanson Brothers when they speak about their possible plans with respect to rezoning. It is my desire and my husband's desire to leave the property zoned as is for the permanent housing. Please vote to keep the property zoned as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue?
Rick Hoskin, 2240 White Pine Court. I'm also a property that's on the 11th fairway or what used to be the fairway. And we, as much as we love that property and the golf course, I'm afraid it's history. And as a homeowner, we don't want to see it left dormant. It's wild out there. There's coyotes and all sorts of creatures. And I really think it's the best thing for the community for us to have the full story and make a decision to let this through. The best thing for all of us, not only the ones on the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I'll ask one more time if there's any guests in.
I received two forms of communication, two emails, one on December 3rd from Catherine Van Schoenhoven. This requesting that the property stay zoned, R1 One Family Residential District. I can enter that into the record. I see the email today from Ronald and Kathy Fulton. Didn't specifically oppose or address the zoning, but just want, asked the council to make sure that the private covenant considerations are taken in or considered when taking action on an application for rezoning. I'd like to enter both those into the public record, please.
Okay. Catherine, can I make a comment as a citizen also on what was written into the public record or not? We'll wait till...
I just, yeah, we'll wait till the discussion.
Okay, we'll wait till discussion. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Sandy Brown and we live in Gulfview. We don't back up to the golf course, but we're very close to the golf course. The golf course has really deteriorated just over this past year. I was at the first council meeting that we had, and if I remember correctly, you were going to make Hanson's maintain the cutting of the grass on the golf course. And that was never done. And if I remember correctly, the city then was going to maintain it and then charge Hanson's for the labor and time that was spent cutting the golf course. I feel... Whoa. I feel the golf course is probably deteriorated and something does need to be done. I don't care if Hanson's sell it, but I do care that the city is going to break the contract without Hanson's having to do something for the city. And if it's some money upfront or something, but they signed a contract that they would keep it a golf course for 10 years, and I don't think it's right for them to be able to break the contract without any penalties.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Ladies and gentlemen, is there a motion to close the public hearing unless there's someone else that wants to speak?
Hi, Chip Applewhite, 1719 Laurel Avenue. Bought the house 18 years ago primarily because it was adjacent to a golf course. And I understand it looks like it's going to be sold. My concern is we're on the southwest corner. A number of houses that are probably going to be impacted the most. And I'd just like to say if it does become a housing development, have some type of berm or separation for those homes in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hank Hampton, 408 Noah Drive. Just a quick comment, you know, I think a little bit, don't understand why we're even addressing this right now. Last vote was unanimous not to go any further on that. As a member of the golf course, we entrusted the city council to the stewardship of the agreement. So I think anything contrary to actually fulfilling that agreement that you fully agreed to do would really be unconscionable at best and probably actionable. So I think even to approve a rezoning is, like I said, I think it would be a mistake on the part of the council to even address the rezoning issue, much less whether they're going to relieve them of the obligations of their contracts. So I just, that's one thing I think they really, you really need to consider when you do that because I think at the end of the day, it's actionable to go ahead and move forward with anything but actually holding them to their contract and as you said, without some type of compensation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll ask one more time. We'll give anybody a chance that wants to come up and make a comment.
My name is Gary Williamson, former member of the golf course. Couple of questions. Number one, if this goes ahead as proposed, is there a potential of setting a precedent for future activities such as this to take place? And where does the city stand in that regards? And maybe more of a... Maybe, maybe it's a silly question, but if this does go through, are the Hanson's going to repay the existing members, the one-third of the share of the stock that they didn't pay us? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Take as much time as people want to speak. So if, one last time, I'll call for anybody that wants to speak.
I'll move to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's... Hearing's closed. Thank you for everyone that commented. Next item on the agenda is comments and suggestions from citizens present on any issue that's not on the agenda tonight. So if there's anyone here that would like to speak to the council on any issue that's not on the agenda, now is your chance. So again, open mic for anyone that would like to come up. Yes, sir. Again, please state your name and address, if you would, please.
My name's Marion Shaw, 493 Country View Road, Hudson. And the reason why I wanted to speak to the council tonight, I appreciate the opportunity, is in front of the full council, there's been a couple of special committee hearings that took place. And I think it was primarily regarding the liaison officer position and also the situation that took place as a result of an officer being on duty at the school district. And I think I just want to take a moment to try to clarify my position on it since I spoke at each one of those special meetings as well as tonight. This situation really goes back nine and a half years, to be honest with you. And I know that sounds ridiculous, except that none of you were present at the time, but Catherine was. And Catherine was involved in a situation which involved myself and some other people, one other gentleman in particular. And so to refresh everybody's memory, I wrote about it in a newspaper. I gave direct links to the story, to the, there was type written minute by minute, second by second, actions that took place. But at the end of the day, what really happened, if you took the chance to go to the link, which I would be more than happy to supply again to this council, is that the Hudson Police Department, unannounced, without cause, entered a public meeting as I was doing nothing more than I'm doing right now this very second. And I had an officer take my shoulder and walk me away from the microphone and also hauled another gentleman out from the audience. That is not a public disturbance. That is what's called the constitutional right to speak at a public hearing, which is defined by many state laws and statutes as well. What we as citizens are facing right now in light of the most recent incident is that nine and a half years later, you, this council, has an opportunity to do something to make sure that it doesn't continue to happen next week, next month, next year, or nine and a half years from now. And basically, if you're in my shoes, it's a situation where the man with the most money wins. In this arena, it's you representing the public, the taxpayer, and the police department, who are public employees, and the school district, who are public employees, each one protecting each other while the taxpayer has no protection at all. We have crossed the line and there's a constitutional duty to make sure that our police force, our chief of police, ensures that our constitutional rights are kept. I think that it is important for this council to keep this from happening again, to make a move, an action, a budgetary item that will not train the police department employees, but more the chief who runs the police department on what constitutional ethics are and how the taxpayers and the citizens should be protected. Or you have a second obligation, and that is you can put year after year in your budget $50,000, $100,000 for the man with the most money who wants to take the legal battle.
Mr. Shaw, you have one minute.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I guess I'd like to just kind of wrap it up and just say, are we having fun yet? I think at the meeting it came out that there was hundreds of pages of emails trying to take a situation and make something out of it. In my case, it didn't happen. Nothing happened, but yet our rights were trampled upon. So I'm hoping that this council can do something to make sure that this does not happen again within the city or the town or anywhere where the Hudson Police Department is involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Is there anyone else? At this point, let's, possible action and consent agenda.
To approve the minutes, the regular minutes of the meeting, December 1st, 2014. To approve claims in the amount of $389,570.92. Details are available in the clerk's office upon request. Contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and approval by the police department. Approve the issuance of four regular operators licenses for the period December 16th, 2014 to June 30th, 2016, to Carol Rayly, Jasmine Helmer, Kelly Peters, and Becky O'Keefe. And to approve two temporary operators licenses to Luke Steele and Brooks Lockwood to be used at the Hudson Hockey Association's 2014 Alumni Tournament. To approve a Class B beer and Class C wine license to the Hudson Hockey Association for the Hudson Hockey Alumni Hockey Games on December 20th, 2014, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM in the upstairs area of the Gornik Arena. To approve the request for an agent change for Hudson Spirits LLC doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings to Brad Doeman for the license year ending June 30th, 2015. Contingent upon surrender of the current liquor license. And to place on file the finance officer's monthly report, the quarterly report of the EMS director, and the quarterly report of the parks and public works director. That is all.
Move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Morris Sett?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Vansel?
Yes.
Haggert?
Yes.
Yaku Brod?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is the planning commission discussion, or plan commission, discussion, possible action on final development plans for auto parts retail store at 2355 Badger Drive, Auto Zone Inc. Mr. Darnold.
Evening.
Good evening.
Auto Zone Incorporated proposes a 7,147 square foot retail auto parts store located on the north side of Badger Drive in general proximity of being immediately north of the Taco Bell restaurant. Essentially, there would be two accesses into the site. The site's designed so that truck traffic can maneuver onsite and not in the public street to deliver products to the store. Plan commission, there is one issue with, there's two water line, two water service lines that are installed in Badger Drive extending into the parcel. Auto Zone only use one of them. The other one will need to be abandoned at the curb with an abandonment agreement with the Water Utility Commission. So if the streets ever opened at some point for maintenance reasons, then they can abandon the water line in the, in the public street. So plan commission recommends approval of the final development plans as proposed by Auto Zone Incorporated for 7,147 square foot auto parts retail store at 2355 Badger Drive with the condition that plans be amended to shield use of the existing one, one-half inch water service and the four-inch water service will be capped and abandonment agreement with the Hudson Water Utility Commission be executed and filed with the city as a condition of issuance of a building permit. So we would not issue a building permit until that abandonment agreement is filed with our building inspection department.
Questions for Mr. Darnold.
I move for approval based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Comments? Any other questions that may be that you have?
I know... That recommendation's from the planning commission. From the planning commission.
Danny, I know it was asked at the planning commission, but is this going to be architecturally comparable to what's being built in there?
Well, it's not compatible. Basically, this is a prototype Auto Zone store under their typical prototype colors, structures, and so forth. There's some discussion, but not incorporated into the motion to Auto, for Auto Zone to try to work with the city, see if they can interest up the north side facing the interstate a little bit. We haven't received a response on that request, but that was not part of the motion.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Danny. Discussion and possible ordinance, action on ordinance 15-14, request for rezoning of part of golf course property from R1 One Family Residential District to PRD Planned Residential and B2 General Business District and amend the 2009 City of Hudson Comprehensive Plan, land use designations from recreational, commercial to one and two family residential, medium residential, and general commercial, Hanson Brothers LLC. Mr. Farrell.
Hanson Brothers LLC, 12 LLC, requested a rezoning of the property from One Family Residential District to PRD Planned Residential District and in a small 2.7 acre on the southwest corner of the site from R1 One Family Residential District to B2 General Business District. Both would be complementary of existing zoning in the area. The comprehensive plan would be changed from recreational, commercial, based on the plan commission recommendation will be coming forward. The comprehensive plan amendment would change from recreational, commercial to one and two family residential, general, commercial in that southwestern corner, and medium density residential near the clubhouse area. The plan commission recommends to amend the zoning map from R1 One Family Residential District to PRD Planned Residential District and B2 General Business District, amend the 2009 City of Hudson Comprehensive Plan to designate future land uses from recreational, commercial to one and two family residential, medium density residential, and general commercial. Refer to ordinance 15-4, which would place those zoning amendments in effect. I'm suggesting first reading. If there's any issues that the common council may have after discussion tonight, if you want the city attorney tonight to address those before you bring it back for consideration in a second reading or whatever choice of action is tonight, then we'd be pleased to address any issues in behalf of the common council.
Okay. Comments? Questions?
If, I'm sorry, go ahead. If there was to be no development for the next five years, if that was to occur, does the rezoning actually increase the taxes on the land that these people would be paying? No, because the uses would be the same as is.
So the taxes would remain the same.
Correct.
Now, this won't release the city from, or excuse me, the Hanson Brothers from the covenant that's currently in place.
That's correct. It would not.
Is there an advantage to going to PRD versus the R1 in your mind?
Well, the PRD addresses more flexibility in design, particularly in a master plan consideration where you have topographies similar to what's at the, at this particular site where a developer can work better with the topography, allows more flexibility in regards to density considerations, setback consideration, lot sizes. Essentially, what allows the city to do is negotiate a master plan. We have up to six months to, or 180 days to negotiate a master plan once a conditional use permit would be applied for.
There are wastewater considerations?
Well, from the wastewater consideration is, is that about five years ago, we did a fairly detailed evaluation of potential demands of the wastewater, discharges to the wastewater treatment plant. At that time, for the undeveloped areas of the City of Hudson, within existing corporate limits, there was an amount of about 60,000 gallons a day that would be unallocated. This development, if we use Hanshagen Homes project as an illustration of approximately 221 homes or residential units, that would use closely, based on the 192 gallons per day that the individual unit would use, would utilize that 60,000 gallons a day. Now, what needs to be considered is that these developments take anywhere from three to five to seven years, so not all the demand's going to come onboard immediately. We have other areas of the city such as the dog track. It's been allocated discharge amounts, which I think will probably, currently, it's been discharged based on the sewer connection fees that the dog track paid for. If the allocations, if that property's redeveloped, the allocation's likely to come in less than that. So that would transfer some available demand capacity. But regardless, I've preached for five or six years, under any development, any under annexation, that wastewater issues need to be addressed. And that may be one of the issues that if you have first reading tonight, that you'd want me to further detail and bring back a report.
So there might have to be a trade-off between commercial development or industrial development in this development because there's insufficient capacity to accommodate all the potential users.
No, there's sufficient within this corporate limits. What I'm saying is this area was unallocated before. Up until now, we've never allocated because we, the feeling was it's going to be a golf course and there's a low demand for, for the wastewater treatment plant capacity. If a development moves ahead and over a five or six-year period, that, that demand's going to come onboard and that's, you know, that's going to utilize demand that we had not originally projected.
Okay, thanks. That's a better way of saying it.
Danny, if it stayed R1, if it goes PRD, you're going to put 221 homes in there. If it stayed R1 and it was developed, how many homes would be in there?
Well, that's difficult to say, but I'd guess maybe 140 to 150 probably.
I wasn't at, planning commission, sorry for that. So I do have some questions that I probably would have asked then. One of my concerns that I've had since day one is the, and I'm going to put quotes around it, city park. I, I am not in favor of, of this parcel of land becoming a city park. I think if, if there's land that's not, they're not able to use, I don't want to make that the city's issue, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I feel like that's a parcel of land that would just become the city's issue. I'm also having, and I've expressed this in a meeting with John Rass, I'm not in favor of having the multiple cul-de-sacs that we have in this plan. And the reason why I'm saying this, all of this will come to my other point in a second, I also would like to have seen more streets, possibly more through streets to bring congestion off Carmichael because as it is, we have congestion in that area. So the million dollar question I guess I've had is, I don't know why I would want to rezon this when the plan that's in front of me is not something I agree with.
Well, that's the reason we negotiate, take six months to negotiate a master plan is to address some of these issues. Density, setback considerations, type of housing where the streets go through, whether we have cul-de-sac streets. Stormwater is a significant issue on this particular parcel. All those issues would be negotiated.
Okay.
You know, this, again, I'll repeat and I've probably said it 20 times, this plan that Hanshagen Homes is bringing forward is only for illustrative purposes at this time of how a development may be done.
And I know you've said that. My concern is whenever we've addressed Hanshagen on the issue, the answer's always been regarding the cul-de-sacs is with the topography of the land, that's how we best will be able to fit this. So I don't foresee that part of it changing, I guess.
Well, I, you know, I may disagree with the Hagen design team. Our city engineer may disagree with the Hagen design team. So I, you know, the matter is, is that a master plan would have to be negotiated.
And, I mean, rezoning it doesn't, the next step in the process is a conditional use permit. And the council may, if there's no plan that meets the council's approval, then they wouldn't get a conditional use permit. The property would be rezoned. Another person could come forward with a plan, but there's no, rezoning doesn't mean that this plan goes forward. That has to go through the conditional use permit.
But it opens the door to start the process, to change the zoning up, the whole plan.
Correct. It allows a plan to be put forward, is what it does.
And those issues, you know, the issue of negotiating a master plan, there'd be initial discussions with the plan commission, these issues would be brought out and that'd be, be used as a roadmap for myself, city engineer, city attorney to negotiate a master plan.
And included in the master plan would be the impact on the police and public works as well as the fire department and EMS.
We could, we could do that if that's something the common council wanted analyzed.
Well, because I, I don't believe, no matter what we do to develop this, that if this property doesn't generate the tax revenue to cause, to cover the cost of the increase in those services, I certainly wouldn't support it because I don't believe the existing taxpayers should pay for this. We shouldn't have people who are currently in the city paying for this development. So if this doesn't generate enough tax to pay for what we would project the costs would be. the costs would be, I can't support it.
I understand.
Seems hard to believe that it wouldn't. Didn't you estimate?
Well, it's difficult at this point, until, I mean, one is, is that residential developments typically break even. I mean, you're, they're not large compared to some commercial development. It may take a little bit less, the number of services that a residential development, but you know, typically, from a historical standpoint, residential developments aren't. I mean, you know, it's, your assessments are based on the fair market value of the property and so forth. But typically, I mean, it's, it's, you know, you're going to break even, probably.
I'm okay with breaking even, as long as the current taxpayers don't have to pay for the cost. I'm okay with that.
What's the downside to PRD?
Well, downside is, most likely, you'll probably have a little more density. But that's, again, that's an issue that we would, would negotiate. But again, the flexibility gives you, from a developer's standpoint, gives you some flexibility to work with the topography, work with some of the unique characteristics that may exist on that site.
I just had a couple of things. First of all, I was a member for 22 years before it was closed, so I have a lot of history there. For people to say that the City of Hudson allowed this to happen, and I, you know, this was an assignment that the golf course assigned it to the city. We didn't negotiate. We weren't party to that negotiation. So the, from, from my understanding. So don't blame the city because the golf course has been closed. We had nothing to do with that. That was a decision that was made by the members of the golf course to sell it to the folks that bought it. So the City of Hudson's now in a situation where we have to make a determination on what we want to do with that property, and what's in the best interests of the city. So for folks to say that we were, we let the golf course get closed, that's, that's just not even a fair assessment, in my opinion.
So, so basically, by approving rezoning, if we were to approve this rezoning, it's only going to begin a process where we would start to review plans for the development of the golf course. It doesn't relieve the responsibility of the Hanson's for the covenant.
That's right.
So they still would not be able to build to 2020.
Well, until the covenants are released, I, you know, I think, you know, somebody called me up and asked me the question. Is a request to be released from the covenant's going to fall on the tail of a rezoning? One and one adds up to two.
Yep.
Chances are highly likely, yes.
So we'd have, I guess, the question each of us have to ask ourselves before we vote is, ultimately, if you vote to rezone, are we going to vote to release them of the covenants? Or are we just wasting everyone's time?
In, in, in my mind, and I brought it up at the November 17th meeting, that why are we doing this when we unanimously voted once already the direction that I thought this council was sitting, looking towards? So in my mind, and, and with my motion, I am going to make.
Sure.
Finish.
Go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion to deny this rezoning request.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay. For just, I think you need to know the process. Your rezon, your.
Could I stop for one minute?
Sure.
Because you are our council, and as an advisor, I just want you to sit, to, to know that. But at the same time, it was very clear, just made to us, that this is starting the process to rezon it. So everything you're going to say is germane to that argument, which I don't think you should be in the position to tell, not to, I'm sorry, to tell us that direction to go.
I'm not going to tell you how to, whether to rezon it or not. First of all, I want to just inform you of what's required by the council in denying a rezoning or making a decision on a rezoning. You need to have written findings and reasoning for your decision. I also have done some research on this, and the general rule in Wisconsin, and there's been cases on it, is that enforcement of a private covenant is not a factor to be used in considering rezoning. You should make your rezoning decision based on land use considerations. What's appropriate? What are the surrounding land uses? So that's another, you, you need to consider that. Generally, denying rezoning because of a private covenant is not appropriate, because it's not a land use consideration. Hudson has faced, and I'll just acknowledge it, with a unique situation, because typically, private covenants are, as this was originally, between private persons, and it's up to those private persons to enforce it. In this situation, both parties, the golf club and the buyer, the Hanson's, assigned enforcement power to the city. But that doesn't mean that you use that enforcement power in connection with your rezoning. You could rezon and decide, it could be appropriate for a PRD, and you could decide not to release the restriction. You could make both those decisions. One reason for not releasing the restriction would be, you're not happy with the plan that's proposed. You can't get, the conditional use permit process provides you with an opportunity to look at the actual plan. But just in terms of rezoning, the private deed restriction considerations should not be the factor. So given, in my opinion, given that your code requires written findings and reasons for the decision, I think what my recommendation would be, would be to go with staff recommendation on first reading. There may be reasons for denying the rezoning. But those haven't been fleshed out yet, and certainly not written findings. And I think to have a good, solid decision on that, you should take the time to look into some of these issues further and develop reasons for whatever decision you make. That way, it's supportable, and it's consistent with the code process.
Well, if you're looking for an opinion on the motion of the, the person who made the motion, I'm, I'm born and raised in Hudson. I want to continue to believe that that can still be an operatable golf course. And I don't think the owners at this point in time have done their due diligence in trying to make it a successful golf course. So I am holding out hope for it. And I will base that on the rezoning request denial.
Well, let me just also refresh your memory on, there's no obligation under the restrictive covenant to operate a golf course on that property. What the covenant says is that they can't do anything that would interfere with use of the property as a golf course.
Well, they have, haven't they?
Just.
Well, they've closed it, but they haven't done any, made any use of it at this point that would interfere. Someone who came in and wanted to purchase it or operate it as a golf course would need to do, you know, bring it up to speed. But, you know, they haven't done anything, to my knowledge, that would interfere with it being used as a golf course.
We all, we all would like to see it as a golf course. But it's not going to happen. I mean, if you, if, go, just go look at it. The amount of damage that's been done to that golf course is not going to be without a significant amount of money. And I'm not a golf course expert, but in today's market conditions, I don't think that's going to happen. So what our job to do is, what's in the best interest of the City of Hudson for that piece of property? I know the first time that this came to us before the last time that we said no, Randy, was a commercial development. Now, how about the folks that live there right now? What would you think they would think about a commercial development in that property?
Let me ask you.
Yeah.
Respond to that.
Yeah.
Respond to the, sorry about my plan. That's not.
No, that's.
It's about, they've already violated the covenants by letting the golf course.
No, they haven't. No, they haven't.
Because it cannot be used as a golf course right now without significant funds going in back into it. Correct?
Well, it doesn't interfere with its use, use of the land as a golf course.
You know, we can argue semantics on this thing.
And really, what's in front of you is a land use decision. How do you want that property zoned? That's what you need to be thinking about.
My, as, I'm a golfer, and I didn't golf much at Hudson. I thought it was a nice course. I was never a member. I wasn't involved in the sale of transaction. And I'm sitting here, and I, I do talk to a fair amount of people, and you kind of think, well, you think it will become a golf course? I guess I tend to agree with Alan. I don't think it's going to be a golf course. I think the Hanson brothers are going to sit on it for as long as they can. Could be 2020. Somebody raised a really good point out here. It's already overgrown and turning into a coyote patch. So now what? I mean, how, the city at some point is going to have to make some investment just to maintain that property, and then charge them back, because that's part of our ordinance. So are we going to become responsible for grooming a property that has become abandoned, essentially? I think Mary pointed out once also that we could kick the cane down the road and not take action on this now, but, or we could take a responsible approach, and at least try to come up and participate in the master plan such that at least we know what it's going to happen going forward. And I definitely wouldn't want to see it become commercial development. I think that doesn't make that much sense either, given the people that live in proximity. So, yeah, I guess I'm much more in favor of trying to take a positive action and control what's, what's going to happen, kind of based on reality. And I, I understand where you're coming from. I was also sort of surprised when I found out really kind of what had happened, but.
What we're talking about tonight is a zoning issue, not whether the agreement comes in or not.
That's right.
And, you know, if, if you want it to sit for another five years the way it is, you vote to not re, again, we could still come to that conclusion, but don't you think we ought to at least investigate what the process is? That's my recommendation, to say, folks, we need to look at this. I'm not saying we let them out of the agreement, but we have to get to, we're not to that stage yet. I don't believe we've had enough information to decide whether or not we want to rezon that or not. Or we want to develop that the way that they've proposed. And we have total control over that situation, in my opinion, whether we develop it or don't develop it, or allow it to be developed, because, but we need some reasons not to develop it, according to what our ordinance is. And I think we ought to follow our ordinances.
Is it the reasons not to rezon it, or not to develop it?
Rezone.
No, you need to provide written findings stating reasons for your decision on the rezoning application.
That's what I thought. It's developable with the zoning that it currently has.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's single family.
And we have 60 days to make a decision?
Correct.
So we can defer the decision until we get more information?
If you would like, you would.
That's the direction of the common council, correct?
Yep.
My, my concern, and the reason I'm not really in favor of the rezoning at this point in time, is the density of the property. I don't like the fact that they're going to have 221 homes in that land over there. I'd much prefer 140 homes as opposed to 221. I think the traffic would be better. I think the land would be utilized better. It would be a prettier layout for homes. I think it would add more to the city. And, and so that's my concern with rezoning. But, but if, by agreeing to pursue the information, you know, to see what the impact is, I'm okay with moving ahead to get information on what the impact is.
That was going to be my question to Denny. Based on what you're talking about with the density, what's the difference in acreage of lots between a planned residential and R1?
Well, the minimum lot size in R1 is 9,000 square feet. In a PRD, it can be less than that, in some cases, under the, at least the illustrative proposed development. They've got lots as large as 3,400, three quarters of an acre, 34,000 square feet. The issue is that the way some of those lots are proposed, and it's a concern of mine, is that they'd be partially encumbered by storm drainage easements. And would the city in negotiations of the master plan be better off to reduce the size of the parcels and put some of those drainage areas in outlots that'd be better managed versus having individual property owners manage those areas? There's issues like that that would need to be discussed, even under a single family development. Issues like that would have to be discussed.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion and a second on the floor for a denial of the rezoning.
I'd like to ask Tom, what are you, what's your thoughts on a 60-day extension?
I, I think we should, I, I would bring a, make a motion to defer the decision until February, first meeting in February, so we can get some more information and have a basis to make a decision.
We have to, Josh, before we make a motion, we got to address the other one, but continue to.
Isn't that what a first reading would give us, though?
Yes, that would, would do that. But, you know, also, we can defer 60 days, whichever, whatever you guys decide to do. But we have a motion on the table right now that we need to address before we move on to another motion. We should can talk about it.
I'll rescind my motion if, if.
But my second stand.
There it goes.
So we, so we can.
You're willing to take your second back, aren't you, Mr. Van?
Yes, I am. Yes, I will.
Can we make a motion for a first reading?
Second.
What's the timeframe on the first read?
February 10th would be the, the meeting at which you would have to make a decision by, in order to meet the 60 days.
Sixty days. Sixty days. Yep.
So what will, what will happen now, Denny, if we agree to this?
Is that the meeting?
Yeah.
Well, February, I guess it would be February 9th, probably. First meeting in February. First lead, it's on the 9th.
It would be February 8th.
Right. And I just want to know what's going to happen now for the next 60 days.
Well, first of all, I'd probably go back and look at this tape tomorrow morning, or whenever it's available to me, to see what specific items have been listed as far as concerns of the common council. Also invite the common council, if they have specific questions or concerns that they'd want me or staff to address, to send those, a list of those to me directly, so we can address those and bring back a report on the first meeting in February.
So you'd be working with Hanshagen and those people on their plans?
Yeah, I would, probably would incorporate their, their input on some of the concerns. But basically, it'd be a staff, it'd be a staff report, not.
It would be nice, as part of this process, if the applicant, the Hanson brothers, actually came in and spoke to us about this rezoning application.
I agree.
Are you wishing on a star, or?
I, I don't, can't, can't force them. I have no ability to do that. I'm just saying it'd be nice if they did.
They have a motion. Who seconded that?
John.
John did?
Okay. For first reading.
For first reading.
That's right.
Is there any other thoughts or comments?
A couple of things, Denny, that I, concerns I have is our, our access points for this particular development. And we need to figure out whether eventually we can put north-south access in, even where, if you look at the Atwood property, at where we could have another north-south for longer-term development. Not just this site, but trying to get some of this traffic off Carmichael. There's also, I believe, some access points in the Cuts development there. And I'm not aware of those. Someone who lives over there told me there was an access point into that development, through that area. And I don't know if that's correct or not. Do you know? Do you remember that, Denny?
Most not, not, most likely not through a full dedicated street. There might be pedestrian, like a 16-foot wide pedestrian access, or something like that. But I, I'm not aware that there's a full dedicated street access.
Yes, that would be another thing I would look at to see if we could find some more outlets, rather than the one that was considered, that was shown to us in planning. So that would be mine.
One issue going north is the steepness of soaps.
Yes, why?
Steepness of the soaps.
Yep.
Can I make a statement as to why I made a motion for a first reading? To clarify? I'd like to clarify, hoping everyone out there can hear me, because I'm sure we're going to get showered with emails starting tomorrow or tonight. And, and I hope it's understood by the general public that this is a process that we have to move forward on so we can make a decision as to what we want to do. I don't feel like we, as a council, really have any other road to take, except following through with this process and deciding if this is a type of development we want for the City of Hudson. It doesn't mean it's going to go through. It doesn't mean it's not going to go through. It means we need to get questions answered. We need to follow a proper process by state law. So the frustration can be there with the council that we have given in to the Hanson brothers. I've heard that come on a phone call to me today, if we vote for this. That we have, we're, we're opening the door for more problems in the future. But if we don't open this specific, specific door, we, we don't have a way to close it. We need to figure out what exactly can go there. And this development might not even fit there. We don't know. And that's what we understood tonight. We don't know if this development will even work there. So, and we can't make an informed and proper decision without moving forward on this, which is why I'm bringing this to a first reading.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions or thoughts on this?
I would encourage you to get to Denny with your concerns I would encourage you to get to Denny with your concerns and any ideas that you have, and, and so that we can bring those up. And Rich, good points on the density issues and those kinds of things that we can take a look at.
So do I, did I bring, I think I need to bring a motion to defer it, don't I?
Well, we have a motion now to have first reading of the rezoning, which basically is the same thing as defer.
Okay.
I think it's not exactly the same.
This one, Karen May, Catherine wants to clarify it, but if you wanna set a specific date on which it comes back, which I think Tom is suggesting, the first meeting in February, otherwise we'd bring it back at the next meeting, which is first meeting in January, and there's a month difference there.
Yep.
February 10th was what?
February 9th.
February 9th.
It's the last meeting you can do it within the 60 days.
That was in the motion, I think.
Was that in the motion?
Was that in the motion?
No, it was not. Just a half for a reading.
Well, then I added it to my motion, so let it go out till February 9th, bring it back then.
Tom, does that solve your issue?
John, you're fine. That's good. I'm okay.
And if we can find a way to not have 10 cul-de-sacs or whatever it is, I would like us to look at the topography on our end, what we see.
Okay.
Preaching this far.
Any other comments? Again, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on 2015 room tax, community subsidies. I think everyone received a copy of what our finance committee has recommended. Yeah, we'll wait a second while people clear out.
Do you not like our city's water?
Your water?
Well, the city's water. Don't you like the city's water?
All right, let's, uh, let's get moving. Finance committee, I think everyone has a copy of that in, on the table, and questions or comments?
Uh, points of clarification for me.
Yes, sir.
You had, uh, the original statute is 70/30 over. Hudson has one of the original room tags.
1984.
1984.
That's 40%.
And it's only 40%.
Right.
And the 60, the other 60% is at our discretion?
Correct.
Okay.
From my understanding.
Correct. If we were to increase the room tax, you know, in addition?
Yeah.
That was considered, that everything from that increase would be 70/30.
Which is why we're still at the 3%. Isn't it 3%?
Correct. There was, yes.
Okay.
If we were to increase that percentage, then 70% of the increase at least would have to...
And all funds are generated strictly from rooms where people and...
Beds and heads.
The head, beds and heads.
What are the criteria that you used?
That's a really good question. We've been trying to figure that out, Tom, for the last 15 years. Well, maybe not 15.
I, I think, um, I've thought about this a lot, 'cause we were watching you guys struggle on finance, it was awesome, um, and, uh...
You're certainly welcome to help.
I thought you did a great job, by the way. But over the past two or three weeks, having read about other cities and committees that they have, and they include other people, a current statute, you have to actually include somebody in one of the hotel communities, things like that, which we don't do, which is fine. But allocating percentages, so 40%, that's easy. Of the 60%, and these requests, I had a thought that maybe we just start saying, of the 60, you know, 50% of the 60 is available for other, and then 30% or the other would be available for the city to use at their discretion. If we, if we objectify it and make it a little more straightforward, then it gets a little less subjective based on, you know, and if, let's just say, for example, there's $10 and, and 12 people ask for money, then, you know, can't you just split it up for, for everyone to get some? So in other words, why deny somebody when there's money that you could give, parse it out to? Some have greater needs, like the sound system, but at least these people that have applied for funds, all of them, I believe, have some impact on the way our city functions as what we would call intangibles or enhancements that are good for our community. So seems like we could kind of, you know, beef that up a little bit, so we're not saying, no, I don't wanna deny you, I just, I'm only gonna be able to give you so much, and kind of put a, a different spin on it, I think, would be kinda what I was thinking.
And again, I, you know, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, 'cause I think I'm, I'm the lone ranger on this, is, does it make any sense for us? And again, I, I'm not trying to, to downplay any of these organizations, 'cause they're all excellent organization. Does it make sense to use tax dollars to fund a private nonprofit agency? You know, maybe it does. I, I, I don't know. But I know we have plenty of needs within our city, whether it's our park system, our police system, our public works, that we can utilize those funds and, and benefit all of the people in Hudson. And not saying, again, it's not, I just, it's...
Which is why I'm saying earmark some for that and earmark some for the other. That, that's all I was suggesting.
And, and we can do that. I, you know, every year, we used to have the slush fund or whatever, the last part of it was...
Unallocated.
Unallocated portion, not a slush fund. Unallocated portion. It, it just, honestly, there's more requests than there is money available. And every year, we, we get into the same situation. So if you can think of a way to do it easier, I think that's, whatever percentage, we can certainly look at that.
I, well, like I said, in, in my world, everyone would get some.
But how many, what if we have another 40 people that apply for the money? So everyone's gonna get $5?
It's kinda like the chicken thing. You just don't see it happening, you know? I mean, we have 15 permits, right?
We say, it's open for anybody that wants to come and ask for money. Everyone will come and ask for money.
If it was up to me, I'd, I'd eliminate all of these and just give the money to the city, and that's the way it would be. That, that's how I would work with it.
Yep.
That's really how I feel the best way it is.
Am I wrong, or is there not a state law that says that we do need...
No, we have to, 40, we have to have 40% of it has to go to tourism.
That's right.
Yeah, we have to fund to certain things. We can't...
You can't just say, yeah.
Well, we give, we give to the Chamber of Commerce, that's tourism.
Yes.
We're giving 70% to tourism.
Right. We already are.
We already give 70% to tourism.
Correct.
But we don't have to.
No.
Was your point.
It was our, we elected, we were going at 60, 55, we went to 60, 65, 70. I think that was a choice that the council made, that they wanted to increase the amount of money going to tourism for advertising. And I think it was a good choice.
The final thought I had, just to, before I forget, I should've wrote it down, but that this heads and beds is what generates these revenues. So programs and people that can help do that, to me, helps protect this revenue stream. So some of these directly apply to that, some are, again, intangible and not direct. So of the 70% we give out, those that directly apply to beds and heads, wouldn't they just be getting funded out of that? I know Mary's not in favor of funding the PIPs, for example, but they, or hot air fare could come out of the 70% and not the other, because they directly affect heads and beds. The PIPs draws from 29 states, hot air fare probably draws from 30 or 40, at least, but that's, that's their, that's their draw. Ms. Hudson, I don't know what kinda draw they get, but they do go out and promote Hudson all over the place. Where they do like 300 parades or some, it's a very large number of parades.
I don't think they do 300, but they do a lot.
Well, they do a lot. Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, but...
They do a lot.
Since we have allocated a fund for heads and beds mon, revenues, my thinking was that we just parse this out, which one of these actually affect that, and then use that money for that, 'cause we've already capped the PIPs. And some of that comes out of there, and then other funds could be there, and then some for the city. So I, I saw three buckets myself, um, coming into this, kind of, without looking at the details and everything, but that's, those are my thoughts.
So how do you, you know, again, I, I agree with you, John, and, and we've gone through this many times, but, uh, if for, well, you can do it this year too, but why don't you put a proposal together and let's take a, because, you know, the Octagon House, they talk about the, you know, tourism and how many people, you know, does that come?
They actually directly apply to the statute under the current law, which is funding museums and things that draw people. They're, they're part of those kinds of dollars. So, yeah, you could throw them in the bucket number one.
How about the senior citizen center?
Senior citizen center would probably be in bucket number two.
Okay. But again, holiday lighting, the fireworks.
Heads and beds, sort of tourist draw, then it's the intangible, senior center, VFW, that kind of...
You know, for the...
And then city, sorry.
For the discretionary part of it, what I thought is, the council, not tonight, because it's gonna be getting late, but in the future, when we consider these things, think about who's being served, the ability of the organization to raise funds, the contribution to the community, is a subsidy a significant part of the organization's budget, and does the organization provide ongoing services to the community throughout the year? And, you know, kind of, kinda use those criteria, if you agree with them, to the applicants that are trying to, well, that are requesting the funds. Having said that, I'm going to make a pitch for why the senior citizens' allocation should be higher.
Okay.
And the reason is their budget is small, and this is a significant part of it. And secondly, of all the organizations other than the cemetery, these are the people that are least able to conduct fundraisers, to raise funds. In addition, they serve a, a segment of the population that is frequently forgotten and invisible sometimes. And I, I looked at the statistics, and I think they, they serve 700, or, I'm, excuse, I, I think they served 85 or 10,000 meals, um, either this year or last year.
Last year, any time, but...
And their budget is relatively miniscule for having served that many meals and helped that many people. So I would like to, uh, see that their allocation go to 4,000 instead of 3,000. Actually, I'd like to make it higher than that, but I'm not sure that there's sentiment to go beyond that.
So, Tom, does it concern you that less than half the folks there are city of Hudson residents? Does it?
Well, a lot of people that are using these other things aren't city of Hudson residents either. Of course, that's a concern, but I don't think that we should, uh...
It's kinda the core of the nature of room tax dollars and why they established it, that people come into our community.
So I guess I would, if I could make a...
Where would you like to pull the 1,000 from? Do you wanna pull it from unallocated funds? Do you wanna pull it from something else that's already allocated?
Yeah, that's unallocated.
Okay. What was left in there, Devin?
9,700.
9,700.
8,700, yep. So be 80, 8,700 left then.
Mm-hmm.
Good job.
Anybody else have thoughts on that?
I agree.
Okay.
Randy, don't pull that.
It's gotta be that.
Hold, print it.
I'd, uh...
Any other comments?
Uh, well, my, of the 70 or 40, I still think the PIPs and hot air fare should go over there because they're kind of part of that.
Well, we've given hot air fare a raise this year of 500. The PIPs, to address why you say, why you suggested I'm against it, is exactly what Tom has just pointed out. I think we looked at budgets, who is at most need, how do they get their fundraising? Obviously, the PIPs serves a lot of people. My daughter's in Bah Humbug. I'm a big fan of the PIPs. It's not like I'm not. But when you have a $2 million budget, what, did they fundraise $2 million this year?
I think it was $2 million for capital. And a mil, their, their budget's about a million, I think.
I'd rather see that 1,000 go to one of these other organizations who can't do it, like the seniors, or, you know, Octagon House may need it, or, that's, that's the logic behind the PIPs. When you have a $2 million budget, I think their, their, the $1,000 coming from us is...
I don't think they have a $2 million budget. I think it's a $1 million budget.
Sorry.
It's a $30,000 marketing budget, to be exact.
Pardon me, moi, a $1 million budget versus a $5,000 budget is what I'm looking at here when I'm making these decisions.
Yep.
I, I find it difficult to exclude the one entity, especially since they pay for Minnesota Orchestra and things like that. So it, it just seems odd that we would pick that one entity.
I didn't try to exclude just one. I tried to exclude a couple, but I got...
I saw that, too.
So, really, I'm compromising.
Your guys' decision, make a decision, and let's move on. But, you, you know...
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the room tax, uh, budget as proposed, although adding $1,000 out of unallocated funds to the senior citizens, making it 4,000.
Are you, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll second that.
Okay. I'm trying to figure out how to, if we wanna talk about your, your inclusion...
I'm with you. How about I put together something for next year?
Okay. That'd be great.
'Cause I, I think it'll work, but right now, it seems like it's Christmas time, man. We gotta get on with our life. No, I'm joking. But I, I believe that it has some, you know, there, there's a way to figure it out where we can easily, um, work through all these and have it make sense, so...
Well, I, I would have a tendency to...
Yeah, I would like to see 1,000 come out of the 70% for hot, or whatever money is for the PIPs and hot air fare to come out of that, 'cause that's directly related to what this, the room tax specifies. And then that puts us more on unallocated and, so a slight cut out of the chambers revenue a little bit.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
And a second.
Did it include the cap and the...
I made the motion to approve the room tax proposal as recommended, as recommended, as we recommended in finance, but in adding the $1,000 for the senior citizens.
I'd just put that at the bottom of the restriction, Randy.
Any discussion, comments, questions? And your reason for the senior citizens is because of Tom's reasons?
Yes. It's Christmas. Yes, I, I think Tom made sense, so...
All right. Are we ready to vote, ladies and gentlemen, or lady and gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys and gals.
Do we need to vote on the float?
The allocation to the float, the money to the float, doesn't matter.
We didn't vote on the float.
Yes, we do. Because that was on, that was part of finance recommendation also.
3,000, Mary?
Yeah.
You have the dollar amount from...
The dollar amount for the float that finance recommended was right here somewhere. Hold on. $3,500 to, for float improvements, and that was take, that was not including the $800 from painting because they know a painter.
So they're recommending that come out of the 2014 unallocated?
Yes.
One time.
One time.
Allocation for the...
Fix the float, get it up to part, and they need to keep...
What's wrong with the float? I kinda couldn't, couldn't hear.
There's a, uh...
In the packet, John, there's a list of the things.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I read it, but I scanned it.
Yeah.
Needs new tires, needs to be repaired in some other ways.
Sound system.
Sound system.
It's a one-time opportunity. Any comments on that? There was a, there was a motion. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Now we can, anybody, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Next item is discussion, possible action on bids for squad cars.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Marty, you want to just talk about the squads?
Thanks, Rich. Yes, sir. As you can see, the bids came in. Obviously, Hudson Ford was significantly lower than the other two. My recommendation to the finance committee was to approve the purchase of the SUVs versus the sedans. The reason behind that is that the squad cars we've got now, I've got such more, more equipment in them, it's getting harder and harder to find room for the officers. The Taurus is a much smaller vehicle than the Crown Victoria, and with the savings we're getting in regards to the 2300, or $23,100, it's only a difference of about $1,800 between the sedan and the SUV. It will give our officers obviously a lot more room, especially again with the MDCs, radar units, camera systems that we have in the cars.
Marty, the significant, is there a significant mileage difference in the two vehicles?
No, there's none.
Okay. And the, the price is, is very good, isn't it? I mean, based on what...
Very, very, very good. If you take a look at the other two from River Valley and Ewald, they're almost identical. If you take the one from Hudson, they're almost $2,600 less.
And this is a net car? We're going to, we're going to get rid of two?
We're gonna be getting rid of at least two cars. One in a lease vehicle, and then one in regards to one of these squad cars here. Depending on what happens with the next item on the agenda, depends on whether or not I get rid of another squad car.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Unfinished business discussion, possible action on agreement between the City of Hudson and the Hudson School District for the police liaison officer. We have Mr. Meyer here that would like to make a comment, if that's okay with the council? Yep, come on up, sir. Give us your name.
Yes, good evening, thanks. My name is Tony Meyer. I'm the Student Services Director with the Hudson Schools, and over the last year and a half, I've had the opportunity to work very closely with the school resource officer and thought it would be helpful and important for me to come and share my perspective in a student services capacity. As a parent and educator, I believe that our children are our community's greatest asset and that it is our community's most important responsibility to keep them safe and to protect them. The school resource officer is important and integral in keeping our children safe on a daily basis. While I don't want to be sensationalistic, I do think it's important for everyone to recognize and think about the devastating consequences of school violence. A school resource officer is an essential member of our school safety and security team and serves as a natural deterrent to violence in the school, as well as other criminal and disruptive actions. Students and parents alike have reported to me and to others that they feel safer with the school resource officer in our schools. In addition to being an obvious deterrent, the school resource officer brings expertise and training that translates into proactive practices that also protect students. It's expertise and training that we don't have. So for example, John Grass and I attended a school threat assessment training last summer. Since that time, John has been actively communicating with regional law enforcement leaders in school threat assessment. Through those conversations, he and I have been working with other school districts with the hope of bringing in national experts to train us and prepare us to have our own school threat assessment team here in the community, so we can actively and comprehensively assess the risk of school violence before it occurs and take immediate and appropriate action. Having a school resource officer also breakdown, breaks down barriers between students and law enforcement. Our children are able to see John on a daily basis, see him having candid conversations, casual conversations with their classmates, and this translates into a level of comfort that improves safety for our school and our community. So the relationships that he's able to build, allow students to feel like they can come in and talk with him and share concerns. John has shared with me that on a number of occasions, students have stopped in and told him about parties that were going to be happening in the community where drugs and alcohol would be present, and how those students felt very concerned for the safety of their friends and other people in the community. Without him there, I think it's unlikely that those students would be coming forward and asking for assistance. Additionally, students have also come forward and talked about significant things that have happened outside of the school walls, things like theft, vandalism, even sexual assault. Students stop in and talk with him about these things. They happen outside of the school walls, so it's very unlikely that they would come in and talk with a school official about them, issues around privacy and embarrassment and those kinds of things, but they feel very comfortable going and talking with John about them. Having him in our building gives us more safety and security for our students and as a community as a whole, because we're able to actively hear about these things, investigate them, and take action when appropriate, whereas we may not have even heard about them if he wasn't there. I think a school resource officer is uniquely positioned to provide education to our children about things like drug and alcohol use and other topics. For a number of years, the Hudson Police Department came into our schools and provided education to our students using the CounterACT curriculum. My understanding is that this was done through a grant and that that grant sunsetted, and we haven't had the resources to continue with that. However, in North Hudson, Chief Richard has been able to continue offering this instruction to students at North Hudson Elementary. I talked with him today a little bit about the CounterACT program, and he shared with me that his instruction has been really powerful, and he's directly attributed the significant decline in childhood vandalism and theft reports specifically to the power of the CounterACT curriculum and the relationships he's able to build with his students through this experience. I think that by continuing and expanding the SRO program, we would be hopeful that we'd be able to again offer this type of educational experience to our students, and that this would again translate into safer schools and safer community. In closing, I believe that the school resource officer serves to keep our children safer. The SRO position also serves to build relationships and connections with students and with community members that extend well beyond the school walls. I encourage the council to continue and expand the school resource officer position within the Hudson School Department. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. So we've had a committee, it was Randy and I and Mary, that sat on a committee that...
Tom.
And Tom, I guess, this side over here.
This side, yeah.
The right side over here, the correct side. And I think the, I think you have a, a issue sheet that was submitted. There were some, some issues that were talked about in the, one of the questions, which we've already approved a second officer. So, you know, the answer, the, one of the questions is, should we continue to do that? I think that's one of the things we want to do, that. The other question that came in is, is the position, if implemented, what's the level of funding provided? The school district, the proposed for 2015, I think we've negotiated with the school, at 75% for both positions. Think of, number three, is there currently, there's a five-year rotation on the officer, PSLO officer? Should that term be reduced to three years? And any other concerns that the council may or may not have? So that's the point of kickoff for discussion. Maybe, there's three here that were on that committee. Is there any other issues that we missed here that I missed when we tried to summarize what we talked about?
Can we add something to discuss?
Can we try, I don't, I talked to Marty about it. I'd like to see the liaison officer keep his police department email versus having to go through a school email. They can, I don't know if they can add him on to the overall school emails or not with his police department email. The rationale behind that is that when open records requests were needed, this, our police department is swift, and we, they, citizens receive them as soon as they can, and the school district had taken some considerable amount of time, and I think that would help if there are future situations. Everything goes to one, one place, and...
I think that can be an internal thing with...
Yeah, but I don't know if that's something that has to be contracted, and Marty was concerned about confidential things, and so it has to be discussed with the school, I guess. I just want it to be out there, so we don't forget about that concept.
Anything else? Tom or Randy?
Well, I was the one, I think I suggested a three-year term, and the reason being that the emails in this episode has shown a blurring of the lines, and if we're going to continue with this program, I understand the officer needs to work with the school, but in Officer Grass's situation, I think he kind of lost sight of who he worked for. So I'm not going to support anything unless there's a three-year rotation instead of a five-year rotation.
I don't think that's in the contract. Is it, Marty? No, it is not. That was an internal thing that we put together?
So what's the logic behind a five-year?
Well, I implemented the five-year program to, obviously, for one thing, so that there's more turnover within the school district, but to give other officers an opportunity to do it. I went with five years because this, by the time the officer gets here, gets trained, it's gonna take him almost a full year before he gets very comfortable where he's at, and then he's gonna take his freshman class all the way to the senior class, so you've got four years within that. So I decided to round it up to five years, and that's where I've left it at. It makes it easier than having every three years, having to have officers that are interested, apply for the position, go through the interview process, bring them on board, and then the school's got to get used to a new officer after three years versus five.
Yeah, which makes, I was thinking maybe that's what it was, to go through a whole class.
Correct.
So...
Before that, when Mark Crimmens was the school resource officer, before I became chief, he was there for nine years. So that's a long time to be in one position.
I would agree. Okay? Might as well stay there, because I'm sure you're gonna get some more questions.
Well, I'll say it again, I support what we've put in place here, and I think it's essential to the safety. I know everybody has different opinions on that, but I do want to see it continue on with both officers at what we've negotiated. And if, if there's some compromise on the, the rotation, I'd be okay with that. I, I don't know. I agree kind of with what you're saying, that maybe, maybe four. I don't know if Tom would go four or not, but to see them through the graduation.
Yeah, I don't know if I would want to compromise on the rotation, because I think it's logical how he's doing a rotation. Simply, if you need to train, I would want that freshman class to see the same person through their senior year.
And once we're doing it with five years, John's been on now for about a year and a half. By the time this new person comes on, after about three and a half years, I'd be replacing John. Another year and a half, another person would be coming on, so there would be turnover within that position.
That isn't necessarily bad.
No, it is not. It's an opportunity for the officers within the department to do something else.
Yes.
Right.
But that five years gives them enough time to understand what their job is and then to get to know the students.
Yep. Gonna be a, what happens if we go to a three-year high school, then?
Then you can adjust.
Then you can adjust.
We can adjust.
Okay. John?
I have had many people ask me what our liability or exposure is to things that happen from a police and other, well, you know what happened already, but is there a liability outside of regular police enforcement that would occur in crossover and being a part of the school district or anything?
No, he's still a police officer, he's still covered by the City of Hudson, so if, it would be no different than if he took action on the city street. If he takes action on the school grounds and he's being paid by the, technically being paid by us, the school's just reimbursing us. So that's where that liability issue would come from. And Catherine, if I'm wrong on that?
No, that's correct. In the contract, in the agreement, there's a provision that says each party is responsible for their own employees and actions of their own...
After the committee, we did ask our insurance agent that, and he, he is an employee of the city, so it is the city's insurance that...
So in other words, we are responsible for the officer when he's on school property?
That's right. Okay.
No matter how much is paid by each party.
Correct.
Doesn't matter.
Right.
It's no different than if he goes to Walmart or Kmart or anyplace else. If he's on their property, he's our officer.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't see the...
We had, we had an officer at Target, they paid for him to be there on Thursday night of Thanksgiving for their sales and make sure that there was no problems in the lines. So if something were to happen there, he'd still be our employee.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I support the program. I support the, the police officer and the schools, and I do think it is a safety issue for the kids, and, and I'll be voting in favor of them.
And in actuality, no vote really needs to happen if you want to go with what you approved previously. It would just be if you wanted to either change the amount, change the, as Tom suggested, change the term, change the number of officers. Because right now, you approved, you approved a, a contract, basically, at 75% for two officers.
But the term of the officer assigned is internal. That's an issue.
And that's not even in the contract, correct.
Right.
So if nothing is, if nothing's gonna change, there doesn't have to be a motion.
And the email thing can be done, looked at internally?
That can be looked at internally. My only concern, and I'm not sure about this, Catherine, but if we put a term in the contract, say, three years, and I decide after a year and a half, I want to take that officer out, it might go be bound by that agreement to leave that officer in there after three years.
No, I think you want that to be your decision, solely your decision. I don't think it needs to be a part of the agreement.
Okay.
Well, with the direction of the council, of course, but it's not part of the agreement. It's department operations. Unless you're talking about the term of the agreement, and you're not.
You're talking about the term, the rotation period.
The rotation period, correct.
Well, you could put something in there that it's four years unless an earlier term is desired at the discretion of the chief.
Right.
Yeah, as long as it remains his...
I don't think the school cares, do they? I mean, this, it's our, it's our officer.
Well, it's our officer, but I think they do care a little bit, because they want some continuity going forward. They don't want to have everybody, every couple of years, having a new resource officer to come in that they have to train and, and go forward for. That's why I compromised, like I said, with the, that five-year. I think that was enough time to get them through the school and get them acclimated to it.
So will we be, will other law enforcement be at school board meetings, or that's just...
No, that was action taken.
Well, it's just a internal thing. It's, it's at the chief's discretion. But no, the liaison officers will not be at the school...
Not the liaison, but can another officer be present?
It's up to the chief of police.
I've, I've already talked to the superintendent in the school district about it. I said if there's an issue that comes up beforehand that they know about, that they want an officer there, they're gonna have to come through me to, and tell me what they need him for, therefore, but it would be very, very limited.
Okay.
I thought we had already decided that the Hudson Police were not gonna be at school board meetings as a regular feature.
That's what he just said.
No, the liaison, right.
The liaison officer.
And any other officer either.
It would be a limited basis, yes.
Just, just in response to a call?
Correct.
Well, the only, the only situation I could see where it would be different, there have been a couple of situations where employees have been terminated, and there's been concern about them showing up at the school board meeting, because that item is gonna be on the agenda, and they wanted to have a uniformed presence there. That would be one of the situations I could see happening.
Because we, you know, there is a history that is not good, and, or at least in certain instances, it hasn't been good. We don't want to repeat that going forward, so...
No, but if a citizen requests a police officer to be present, we have to...
Not a citizen, it's a school.
Well, if a school, if anybody requests an officer, if Target requests an officer present, they're willing to pay for the officer, I mean, I don't think it would be the right thing to say no.
And it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be like every school board meeting, I'm gonna have an officer there. It would be when they have a very limited or a concern that there might be something that happened.
As, as needed, basically.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, the, the problem has been, as one of the spokespeople pointed out, that our officers have been, I don't want to say used, but they've, they've been involved in situations where the administration has asked them to do things that infringe on the rights of the citizens, and that's something we want to avoid going forward. So how are we gonna avoid that going forward?
Yes.
How are we going to avoid that going forward?
Well, it, it comes down to the fact is, is that if something comes up at a school board meeting or something similar, because in the 16 years we've had this program going on, or we've had officers at school board meetings, there's only been the two incidents, one in 2000 and five, and this last one that's gone forward. Now, in this last instance gone forward, I don't think where our officer did anything wrong. He followed, he had a complaint, he followed up an investigation, he went forward. I know that some people, I, Tom, I know you disagree with me on that, but again, we didn't arrest anybody, we didn't put anybody in handcuffs, we didn't threaten to take somebody to jail or anything else. We followed up an investigation, and that's what we did. I know this is a hot topic for a lot of people, and I talked to the mayor about it once it happened. I said, that's it, we're not gonna have our school resource officer at school board meetings anymore. And I've told the superintendent that, except for those situations where they believe that there's gonna be a cause for problem, and they want a uniformed officer there, then I will have one. They'll have to go through me.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, I'm sorry?
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I didn't know if you were done.
No, I'm done.
Okay. The officer that's gonna be responding would be someone other than the school liaison officer.
That is correct.
Yeah.
All right.
That was my question originally. Yeah, yeah, 'cause I kinda spelled that out.
Any thoughts, comments? Anybody else wanna say anything, or?
I, I'm with Rich. It seems like it's been a very successful program. Kids are able to share things that they probably, I just recall, as you were talking earlier about my days of school and people telling people about parties, that would've been a bad thing for, for some people, but the fact that they have the option to do it now, it's pretty powerful, really. I mean, so.
Okay. I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken on this. Anything else on that? I think we should, I think we need to continue, we had one of our council people on the, on the three-year deal or five-year. I think we need to maybe follow up with that and see where we wanna be with that. Does anybody else, anybody else on the council have any thoughts on that?
Well, I, I think Marty clearly stated that one year is kind of just getting used to the thing, so seems like three years on the job at a minimum would be four in total.
Okay.
I don't know how you would go less than that unless it, you had other people that went through the training and could kinda swap in and out, but...
Could you be, feel...
Amenable to four?
Yeah.
Sure. Makes sense, as long as we...
We'll talk, we can continue to bring that up, and, and let's, let's look at that.
Okay.
I think that, we don't need to have a resolution or anything right now, just... Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Couple things, as we wind down the year. I think we're into communications from the mayor. I'd like to thank all of our city employees for all the work they've done. They really do an excellent job. Our, our folks work really hard, and they do a great job for us, so we have a group of excellent employees, and we really appreciate all the work that they do. I'd also like to thank you folks for all the work that you've done, and we don't always agree, but I think it's been civil, and I think we, we've done a good job serving the city, the citizens here. That's our main function, and I think you guys have done a good job with that. I think of what we did last year with all of our capital improvements, all the street repairs that we did. The parking downtown was a, something we started in May, and it was done by October. It had to be record time for something to, of that kind of a magnitude for a city to get done, at least since I've been involved. So thanks for all that. Some of the things we're gonna look forward to the next year, I really think we need to look at a new fire and EMS station to serve our entire area, or better serve, that would be a better way to put it. I think we need to look at our assessment policy for our street repairs. I think we've got a lot more projects that we're gonna be undertaking, and I think we need to look at that. Public Works Chairman?
Got it.
Okay. Also, continue our capital improvement. We need to continue to do our, our capital improvement things. And if you got your tax bills this last year, if you go to the city of Hudson, most of us had no increase or a slight decrease, and so I'll compliment you guys on that, too, for, for all the work that got done, and our budgets, and all those things, and we kept our taxes even for, for our citizens. So that's all I had, but thank you very much, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. City Administrator?
Nothing other than City Hall will be closed Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day.
City Attorney.
Will be open.
City Attorney.
Nothing except Merry Christmas to everyone.
Uh, any other council people? Have anything you'd like to add for future agenda or comments?
I would just like to thank the mayor for all of the work that he has done throughout the year.
Absolutely, yeah.
And for the leadership that he's shown in getting the projects done, the capital program that he proposed, and all of the work that he does with the department heads. I think it's been very helpful, and it certainly shows in the work that's getting done in the city. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Move for adjournment?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.